Thank you. Well, we had to cancel the committee of the whole meeting last week because of the weather. So we have a full wait this evening. We don't want to urge any discussion, but we'll try to keep moving. So we'll start with the roll call, please.
President Cook.
Yeah.
Vice President Damm. Secretary Thomas here. Fessy Gayton.
Yeah.
Fessy Zimmerman. And Fessy Everard.
Yeah.
Lloyd, could I ask you to read the public edition ethic goal six and goal two?
Oh, I'd be happy to. To foster a conservation ethic among Henry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, develop a greater awareness of our role in responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral good deed, become educated about conservation issues, and to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. And goal two is to acquire, maintain other wildland, scenic areas, and open spaces for conservation purposes and for educational and recreational use.
Thank you. And next we'll have the reading of the conservation stewardship pledge. Linda, how do you feel?
Sure. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns, a strong economy, and a beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number nine, we will provide outdoor places to reflect, play, and interact with family, friends, and community.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a public hearing on the combined budget, but prior to their hearing, Elizabeth and Andy Diallick were going to review any changes that have been made between the tentative budget, which we discussed in the final budget.
So while I'm trying to get this up for us. Andy, can you hear us?
Yeah, do you want me, are you just going to let me share a screen or?
I can do that if that's easier for you.
Yeah, probably with the animations it will be.
There you go.
I'm assuming everybody can see that first slide. Are you?
Yep.
Yep, yes. Are you guys seeing notes up there just by chance or no?
No, just the presentation.
All right, I like it. Um, so we do have a few changes. Most of them relate to the Coon Creek Kish Corridor. Properties of properties that we had that were purchased through the OT funding. Um, I think as all the trustees should be aware now, there's about 800 acres that are left in agriculture production. Um, and those acreage were purchased with the OT funds and that's administered by IDNR. Um, and we've been working very closely with IDNR to come up with a resolution to remove those acreages from the farming. So the grant requires that the farming is stopped and it requires that the revenues generated from those farm leases go to restoring the natural areas or providing public access or acquiring additional land within that approved corridor. So as you are aware, we forwarded a final plan to IDNR, maybe not final, but we forwarded a recent plan to IDNR. Um, and in that we agreed the district would stop farming over the next five years. So it's kind of a gradually slowdown of the agricultural production. Um, and we would segregate the farm lease revenues from the general operations. So we wouldn't receive those into the general fund and they wouldn't be used, obviously, in the general operations. Um, and we'd utilize the farm revenues then for natural restorations of the lands. So this is really, it's this Coon Creek Kish Corridor that's driving most of the changes between the tentative budget and this final budget. Um, so the first one we have is the revenues related to those acreage I had budgeted in the tentative for $196,630. Uh, see if I can get my pointer to work here for you. Um, and then the final budget, we increased that to $284,000, the difference of $87,000. The tentative budget assumed that there'd be 170 less acres being in active production during the 23 growing season. And that was simply because when we first put this together, we kind of took an average of the five years. Um, Ed and his team hadn't really done any fine planning of just kind of a rough estimate. Um, but the final plan calls for 798 acres to be in production throughout this 23 growing season or fiscal year 24. Um, again, that didn't affect the general fund because all that revenue was removed from the general fund within the tentative budget. So it's just the dedicated accounts. Again, related to the restoration efforts for Coon Creek and Kish Corridor, um, the Littner team had placeholder of $90,000 for seed and herbicide applications in that first year. Uh, the revised budget calls for $318,000, so it's an increase of $228,000. Um, there's kind of a summary of the revised budget there. Uh, you see the seeding at 129,000. Um, seed harvest equipment of 75,000 herbicide. We do have personnel in there of $94,000. That's wages and benefits. That's not new. Any additional staff, it's not new staff. It's just going to allow us that when anyone puts time, ecologists, uh, the manager supervisors toward the Coon Chris, Coon Creek Kish Corridor, we can expense that time against these dedicated account funds. Um, and then the last one would be there's a tentative budget, uh, there's a transfer, a permanent transfer from the tentative budget uh, to the final budget that didn't exist. So in the tentative budget, we assume that only the future farm lease revenues would need to be segregated. So that would be the crop year 23 forward or fiscal year 24 going forward. Um, in the tentative budget, we assume just those would be segregated, but in the plan that was presented to the IDNR, um, we actually, it actually calls for the revenues for the 22, 21 and 22 growing seasons or the revenue received from that acreage in fiscal years 22 and 23 to be segregated as well. Um, and transferred into dedicated accounts. And then again, that would be restricted, restricted just for the natural restoration initiatives in that corridor. So the farm lease revenue that we actually received in the general fund on those parcels and two was 229,000. Um, and the farm lease revenue received in fiscal year 23 is 284,000. So that total is 513,815. We did expend $39,996 during the last two years doing some restoration initiatives down there, I think, as the board's aware. So we can reduce that transfer by that amount. Um, and that brings us to the total net permanent transfer of the $473,819. And then that just shows the dedicated accounts. You have a permanent transfer. Um, the tentative budget had zero. The final budget has the 473,000 coming in and then that's coming out of the general fund, had zero tentative, 473,000 coming out for the final budget. Um, and then looking at the general fund, we had a couple of changes uh, for the expenditures related to unanticipated cost increase um, as well as setting aside something for the compensation study as well. So the general fund, the vehicle replacements, we had a cost increase of $62,000. We went from 321 to 383. Um, and that had to do with known vehicle costs of vehicles that we ordered. We got final costs on those and we know they're increasing. So that gets the actual pricing for fiscal 24 when they'll be procured. Again, those are vehicles that were in the 23 budget that have been reappropriated into the 24 budget. The second one that we explained in the board summary that went out was the addition of another vehicle, 80. Uh, that's also reappropriation. So that was also included in the 23 budget. We didn't capture it. Um, in the tentative budget, we thought we might procure it in time. So again, that's been reappropriated at 71,000 into the fiscal year 24 budget. And then lastly, we proposed, and we sent out a separate communication on this of increasing uh, the amount that we budget for unanticipated expenditures from 50,000, which it's been at for the last several years to 100,000. Um, and again, two main reasons for this one is we've seen a lot of cost increases that we can't specifically anticipate. So it makes it easier for to deal with these when they come up. And then secondly, as you know, we've, uh, the boards approved a cop comprehensive compensation study to occur um, in fiscal year 24. We actually assume that's going to happen, you know, starting in the next probably 60 days. Uh, assuming the board approves the recommendation in front of you tonight. Um, and we believe that would probably take 90 days to complete. So sometime July or August, we should, we hope to have some results from that study. Uh, this additional amount of anticipated expenditures could be used to put uh, forward any recommendations that come out of that during fiscal year 24. Again, anything that's budgeted in this unanticipated expenditure line, it's not an approval to expend any of it, anything that we would want to use in the fiscal year. We have to come back to the board and ask specific approval for each item and each expenditure that we wanted to pull out of here. Um, but it would be much simpler whether it's a cost increase or to do something with some portion of the comp study during the fiscal year to be able to utilize this slide item versus having to look for budget transfers or other surpluses or reductions to compensate for those changes as they come up. And then the last changes that were made were related to an ARPA grant that we applied for. That grant was denied. So we just removed the revenues and the expenditures that were related to it out of the tentative for the final. Um, in the dedicated accounts, there was $30,000 budgeted uh, from the ARPA grant for LBC patio furniture replacement. So both that revenue and the expenditure went away. And again, related to that ARPA grant and the camp fund, uh, we had three projects budgeted, an EV charging station, wayfinding signage, um, and LBBC exterior painting. These were all the revenues tied to that grant, $90,000. Those were eliminated from the tentative for the final. Again, the grant's denied, so those revenues go away. And then the offset is the expenditures that were tied to those. Um, you'll see that on the bottom here. The LBC exterior painting has not been eliminated from the expenditures. That's a necessity. It needs to happen. So we were hoping we could fund it from the grant revenue. Um, but because that revenue didn't come, that'll still come out of the camp funding. And then in a summary, just comparing the tentative, uh, total revenues and expenditures to the final. Uh, we see an increase of or a decrease in total revenue of $32,000. An increase of expenditures of 296,000, again, more than that's tied to the uh, Coon Creek Kish Corridor. Um, netted against some other things. And then the net reserve um, decrease is $29,000. So the tentative budget called for a net reserve decrease of 1.1 million. The final is 1.4 million. And that is it. Any questions?
Well, thanks, Andy. I think that was clear and concise and we appreciate all the work that goes into that. So, uh, with that behind us, unless anyone has something they would like to bring up, we will, oh, I'll ask for a motion to recess, but we can have a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2024 combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance before we vote on it. All right, thank you.
Second.
We have a second.
Who's second? Vice President Damm. Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Fessy Gayton.
Yes.
Fessy Everard.
Yes.
Treasure Prince.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. Okay. So, uh, are there any public comments? Either in the room or on Zoom regarding our budget.
We have several, um, guests out in the meeting room, but I don't know if they have a comment, so.
Allows their opportunity. Appreciate. Board appreciates all the work that the staff puts in to get to this point. And how important it is that we complete the process in a timely fashion. And then we have to pass it on to the county board. So none of this occurs in a vacuum.
Is there anyone from the public, if you could just, uh, show your screen or, or use a symbol to let us know that you would wish to make comments? That way we can ensure that your mic is good to go.
I don't see anybody with any raised hands or anything like that.
Going once, going twice. Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing and we convene our regular meetings. Pat has that and Linda a second. And we can call the roll.
Everard.
Yeah.
Treasure Prince.
Yes.
Vice President Damm.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Fessy Gayton.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. Thank you. Well, next, we're going to recognize some of the troops who have.
Let me adopt the agenda.
Well, I guess we're going to adopt the agenda before we recognize the troops. All right, so. We're going to have some further discussion before, when we get to the consent agenda, but uh, is everyone comfortable with the overall agenda? Among the trustees. I think we can, someone make a motion that will adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
All right, thank you. And a second from Chris. Another roll was getting good at that.
Eddie Thomas. Yes. Fessy Gayton.
Yes.
President Damm. Vice President Damm.
Yes.
Sorry. Fessy Everard.
Yes.
Treasure Prince.
Yeah.
President Cook.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Now, we've got to the introductions, recognitions, and presentations. So, um, Elizabeth, would you like to, I would recognize Jenny Hyder. Her accomplishments, please.
I would. So pictured here is Jenny Hyder. Jenny is our human resources manager. And Jenny's been very involved, obviously, leading a lot of initiatives here, training and development and ensuring the wellness of staff. And she has been very involved with the new Illinois Parking Recreation Association Forest Preserve and Conservation Section during its first year last year. And so, um, the section acknowledged and recognized her as the distinguished section member of the year award. So she gives the inaugural award and we are very pleased for the work that she did to advance special development across the state and that only for our staff here, but for those that are in fourth of the conservation district. So congratulations, Jenny.
Is Benny's out there and she wishes to make a comment?
You know, I did not see her. Andy, uh, I did not see Jenny. She was here earlier.
Well, we appreciate her accomplishments and she helped me, uh, straighten out my sign in for the, uh, for Dharma, so I'm very appreciative of her talents and work. Okay. Elizabeth, next, we're going to recognize Gabe Powers, who has been promoted to the position of Conservation Ecology Manager. And then John Peters, who has been promoted to the position of Restoration Ecology Manager.
These are the two promotions. And so normally we introduce new staff members, but these are elevations from within. And we did acknowledge and, and Gabe was with us last month, but we didn't formally have it on the agenda. And then John Peters is also here, uh, who is our now, uh, Conservation Restoration Ecology Manager and Conservation Ecology Manager. So, uh, we wish them well in their, their new roles here. They jumped right in as part of our leadership team and have great confidence in, in their abilities to lead us forward. So, uh, again, congratulations.
Their cell phone numbers will know where to bother you. We appreciate your efforts in the past and going forward in the future. Thank you. I think David's getting ready to take over their classroom and he's going to update us on the feasibility study for the prairie and marsh conservation area. I think, uh, whoever said make no small plans, that was, that's what this involves is your north, you know, significant plans or options that we grand go line about.
Number one.
Oh, thank you, sir. General lines, probably. All right. So the, tonight I'm going to update you on the feasibility study for the Lions prairie issue. Taking a look at the options for erosion on there. And as a reminder, August is last to adopt the consultant, consultant opinion associates. And just as a reminder, this picture right here, Aldi Natural Area, um, one of the reasons for preserving the site down there. It's a wet metal. You meet wet prairie, such metal complex. And next line. This is approximately the area of the such metal wet prairie down here. And then this is the shoreline that the district has along Fox River. Some of the erosion areas referenced right here and here. And the next slide is the nature preserve boundary. Nature preserve boundary is the crosshatch here and the high quality areas here. And then this is nature preserve buffer in that region. So just a reminder. The next slide is actually based on trustee Everett's question at the, at the end of the August meeting. I started to answer it and I realized half of the crew, there's no way I could provide a great answer because it was a very big question. So the next six slides or so are just to help everyone understand some of the hydrology associated with different wetlands types. Cause the question was, will we have wetlands afterwards or some of that effect, wetland restoration? And I use the term wetlands, a very broad term. But within the wetland concept, there's a lot of different types of wetlands. And because we're talking about hydrology here, the next few slides are specifically to the hydrology aspect of wellings. So it's just a water source and wetland type. So as you increase in groundwater, you move away from bogs and towards fens and seeps. You probably heard us talk about fens in this area. That's one of the high quality natural areas because of how unique those systems are. Because of the glaciation in this area, we have a lot of porous gravels. The rainfall hit the gravels. It'll seep through, hit aquatard, and then you have lateral migration and then then is created with that discharge. So the water's moving horizontally and then discharged on the landscape. And that's as you increase in your groundwater. At, uh, increase in precipitation, if you get towards 100%, you're getting into that bog situation. So you have a depression and then bogs are acidic because they're primarily reliant on precipitation. And then the system that we're talking about has the groundwater influence, but also as we approach the river part, you're having more surface flow. So those wetlands that we were talking about near the river, their primary hydrology is surface driven. Next slide. This is just a cross sectional concept for the groundwater that I was talking about. Again, you have water that's percolating through those porous soils and his aquatard. You have that lateral movement and then have seepage. Then you also will have a water table. Now, water table will influence wetlands. So fans are going to be a groundwater discharge either at the base. Excuse me, at the face or at the base, if you have seepage or groundwater at or near the surface, you start getting into those sedimental wet curries. And so it has to do with how much water depth and duration. You probably heard me say that a bunch of times last time. Depth and duration can also can be above land or underground. But as you have a permanent groundwater source near the surface, you're probably looking at a fan or a sedimental next slide. This is just, uh, off of Nowitzki's model. There's four of them. We're going to talk about two of them, the difference between groundwater and surface water. So this is a groundwater slope. Again, this is similar to the fan sedimental type systems that we have. And the big thing here is this water table. So you have water table that's near the surface or you have water discharge on a sloped base. Next one. This is a surface water slope. So this is the type of wetlands that we have near the river. So the hydrology for these systems are not really driven by that water table. Whereas the fans and the such metals and the wet curries that we have where the high quality natural areas are driven by groundwater, the ones by the river are driven by the floodwaters associated with that water body. So this is important because when we talk about that submersion factor and we look at the aerials, when you have a flood plain and this actually, what a next slide, this is, this is better. When you have a flood plain and you increase the depth and duration, this is approximately three to seven feet of depth, you have what's called an aquatic bed well. So this is open water and people may say, hey, that's a water body, not a well and, but it is a well and everything from here, open water to forest dwelling, all of these are wetlands. So that's why it was difficult when you asked me that question, will there be wetlands when we're done? Yes. And there's wetlands there right now. So aquatic bed depth and duration is a permanent duration, depth is three, seven feet. And as you move up, we get into this deep water marsh. And that's around a foot and a half to three feet. And then shallow water marshes, half a foot to a foot and a half permanent pool. And then you start getting into the situation where you have, um, that groundwater influence near the surface that I was talking about. So that's where your wet metals come in. And then you start getting into the woody species. If you don't have a consistent duration of, of wetland hydrology, you can start growing some of these we, uh, plants. So you have forested wetland, forested flood plain is the one that we have down on the Fox River. Next one. So this is a river rain cross section. And you can see right here, we have our uh, forested flood plain right in there. And then you have your herbaceous vegetation right here. And the big thing is this vegetation, although it's within the flood plain, needs to have that lower river stage in order for that vegetation to be sustained. So when I was saying earlier, submersion, it's because a levee or dam, the dam, Algonquin Dam was placed and it raised that lower stage. So what we did is we essentially created additional aquatic bed with that dam. So flooded out a lot of the vegetation that was there previously. So we didn't necessarily lose that land. It's still there. It's just the water depth has increased to the point where vegetation is no longer growing. So that's when you're going to see the difference, and specifically in that 1939 aerial to the more later ones. Last slide on this topic. If this gray line right here is your flood plain, essentially what the dam does is, is blocks up water and you no longer have vegetation in there because the water's not able to receive. So, so does that answer the question better? All right, fantastic. Next one. So when we're taking a look at these air photos, this is, we just did cross section, but this is from the air looking down. Comparing the 39 to 2001, these are the areas that I'm talking about that were lost by submersion because the water depth had increased to a point where the vegetation can no longer grow. So when we start taking a look at, uh, these restoration uh, concepts, this is going to be important. Next slide. I just threw this up. We had this slide last time, but again, the thing to remember here is that 1939, uh, restoration point is a free submersion condition because the mill dam in 1854 did not back up enough water to submerge the land at Lions. And so it was the Algonquin Dam in 1947, which created that submersion condition, which lost the emergent vegetation and changed it into an aquatic bed type wet. All right. So the RFP, just as a reminder, was, um, given to Hayen Associates and the animations next. And they are doing at a minimum, the first two paths here. So they're gathering data, which they've done so far. They're doing the stakeholder involvement. And then they've also provided the concept plans and some of the preliminary cost opinions that I've handed out to everyone here tonight. And as a refresher, they, if the board determines to move forward, the next animation shows you what could be done if the board so chooses for that sixth um, approach of, of do nothing, they would provide modeling to illustrate what may happen if the district decides not to do anything. Excellent. That's just the total cost for that was approved by RP. Next one. Okay. So the three components that we had in IRP is again, taking a look at the history, land use, recreation ecology. Okay, so the three components that we had in IRP is again, taking a look at the history land use, recreation ecology. This, this public stakeholder input is a big component of the study. And then we asked for the nineteen thirty nine restoration to be reviewed, the two thousand fourteen restoration concept to be reviewed. And then there's no action, that we also left the proposal open enough that. The consultant could provide their opinion if, if they had other options that should be looked at. And they came up with three more, the nineteen seventy four restoration, armory in the entire lane and partial armory. The purpose for the nineteen seventy four restoration is because of the female flood plat, flood plain and mapping is nineteen seventy eight. So all of the statistics that are currently available for the floodplanes in the area are based in that nineteen seventy eight FEMA study. That's the new information as we have for the area. So that's why they threw in that nineteen seventy four restoration. And then they just wanted to provide another couple of options for. Just armory. So this armor, the entire is, is just armoring in the entire length of. The peninsula and then armory partial would be those areas that. Kind of like a minimal approach, those areas that are most susceptible to erosion.
Is the arm, are the armoring options separate from the restoration options? Or do the restoration options include some or all of the?
I think that might be answered. We'll, we'll come back to it if I don't answer it. Alright, so I apologize for people that are online, but, but for the board members here. And why did your, your handouts so that we can go back and forth? But the only difference between the two aerial photos is going to be. One photo is current day and the other one is historic photo, alright? So you can see where the erosion control option came from. So if you look at one A, that's the historic. Aerial photograph and it shows where. Yeah, so those are the historic aerial photographs and it shows those areas of. Perceived land loss. And again, we're, we're taking a look at both submersion and erosions. Then nineteen thirty nine, a lot of that is that submersion factor. And in the first draft, the consultant had a lot of land reclamation, if you will, in this area. And we decided that that was, was not appropriate because. The land necessarily wasn't lost, it's just again, that, that depth and duration, it's open water. So we're primarily just concerned about. Excuse me, land reclamation in this outer red area. And then the nineteen seventy four, as I mentioned, was for that FEMA floodplain, again, just for their. Figures, and then the two thousand fourteen is when the district requested. And that's land reclamation in those yellow spots. And then option four is the complete armoring of the entire shoreline, if you will. And then option five are just a key couple of spots that are vulnerable. Now, if you look at the cross sections, which is the next one, the third. You look at the cross sections, you have two existing conditions in general. One is the floodplain forest, okay, that's where we have the trees. And that's the one on the top left. Right here, and then the other existing condition is your herbaceous vegetation. So non, non tree vegetation and again, in the floodplain. That's here, and then the middle cross sections would be where you would do some type of land reclamation. So you would have an armoring and waterside and then backfilling, and this is something that's. Practice on the chain quite often, they'll do some dredging and then, and then backfill their spoils for. Creation of, of land, of gradient of the rock protection, okay? And then the final one is the cross section of your armor. So I think that went to your question, President, though. Yes, that did answer it?
Yes.
So middle one is reclaiming historical shoreline, bottom one is armory bank, and then the two columns are. Essentially just the difference between the floodplain forest and herbaceous. And then the last one is gonna be the cost for each one of those options, this is the consultant opinion cost. This is not saying that there's a specific plan. Associated with these, we did just general ballpark based on the different options. So the nineteen thirty nine extent. Is around nine million, the nineteen seventy four extends around seven point four. The two thousand fourteen extends three point two. Option four, entire armory, similar at three point two seven, and then the armory in the partial is one point six five. So those are the current cost opinions associated with each of the restoration slash slash. Reconstruction reclamation ideas. And the next part is online. We, for, for our public comment part, we're gonna do two parts of, of stakeholder. Seeking stakeholder input, and one of them is gonna be an online survey. That Elizabeth's gonna be pulling up and once the board says, yes, let's move forward with this online survey, once, once we. Make that live, we'll have it up about a month. And within that month, we're gonna have an open house for those people who may not feel comfortable doing online and they just wanna come in and communicate with. LPR staff and then also the consultant, discuss the different options and provide the district and consultants. There. So this is the online web map, GIS web map. That allows for. Individuals to provide not only their input, will provide spatial component to it. So instead of us trying to guess where they're talking about, they will drop a pin. The first part is just information about the project and, and explain some of the photographs and then what each line means. So the person would enter their information here in the first part, contact information. If they have a specific file, let's say that there's an erosion issue and they want to show a picture of what they're talking about. They can put this, this attached document right here. And then we really want to have them utilize this location, because that tells us what they're actually talking about and which locations they're talking about. So they can drop a pin, if you click on it, you can.
This is just a screenshot.
Oh, it's a screenshot, okay. Alright, you're not live. Alright, anyway, if it was live, you could zoom in and out. And find a specific location and say, my public comment is addressing this exact spot. And then to complete form, it's down here. With that, that's all updates I have, is there any specific questions on where we're at?
I, I have a question. Where's the money gonna come?
That would be stage four or five. My question is, is there any grant opportunities? Depending on what was selected, there's amongst, amongst our conversations with consultant and some of the. Regulatory stakeholders, some of the options on there may not be permissible. Well, there may not be funding associated with it, but there might be funding with other ones, right? That's a, I don't know question at this point in time, I don't think we're there yet. What we really wanted to understand was define the issue, give public feedback. Define what the public issues actually are, because it seems like there's different cases for different people. So each person can have a different idea on what should happen and then present it to the board and figure out.
So they put the dam in so they can, oh, is that, where did, I don't, I have not, don't know nothing about it. What did they put the dam in the first place for?
First was for milling. So energy. Way, way back. Yeah, that was that.
No, that was eighteen fifty four, I believe.
And then the state purchased it and then put the Algonquin Dam in nineteen forty seven, I believe that was the date. And. I think that was just recreation that. But I think, I think the important thing to kind of realize, hopefully I portrayed it as, as, it's really a. Because of how deep the water is, why some of that land was lost, it's, it's still there. And then there's other areas that there is erosion occurring, but everything that was lost is not erosion.
Also, originally, wasn't it that they thought it eroded a lot?
There are areas of erosion, but there's also areas of submersion, and we're just talking about that nineteen thirty nine. Let's just call it pre-dam to post-dam.
Do you know if the, and you mentioned that the Illinois Water Agency, whoever. Is responsible for the operation of the dam. Is there a seasonal fluctuation that is part of their management plan? Because that seasonal fluctuation would influence. The apparent submersion or erosion. You took an aerial picture, obviously at high water versus low water. So, I, I mean, part of educating us and the public is. I think it gives us an understanding of the way that dams are being managed and you use the term pools. Just like on the Mississippi River, there are these, you know, X number of. Rather specific bodies of water and the, the level is managed for. To allow barge traffic or. Fish habitat or whatever it might be. I think some of the stakeholders on the river are concerned about the waves of. Created by boat, boating and so forth, and so there's always gonna be some tension between. People who, who wanna see a natural area and people who want a recreational area. So. Part of this process, well, I think. Educate everyone as to what the. How the riverway is being controlled, maintained, and then the question is. What can be done in the way of improvements to enhance its. Its multi-use purposes.
In the, in the August presentation, I had the given summary on that crustache, you remember me talking about that? That, that's what controls the water level and. Based on my understanding, the current operation is to lower it during the winter. And raise it during the summer from an ecological perspective. Yes, winter droughts are good, but it's better if they go into the growing season, it's opposite. So we're actually flooding our vegetation before it has a time to, to grow and stabilize. So it's really driven at this point in time for recreation versus, I, I don't think there's that many ecological. Manipulation, I think, well, actually I know it's for floodplain, considering flood pulses. They lower it in preparation for the spring floods.
What do you need from the board in the way of? Permission or funding or next step?
The next step was, would be, is if this sounds good, we'll move forward into the, the, the online, we can put the online public. Comment piece out, so we can start soliciting public feedback and start to plan our open house. So that would be the stage of, if this all sounds good to the board, we can move forward and next stage.
And when do we have to write a check for the next stage? In other words, we've allocated X number of dollars. To the preliminary study, does the next step involve an additional allocation of funds or?
We, so there was a slide, I believe, with seventeen thousand and twenty thousand. We're still in that seventeen thousand stage, which the board has already approved. So there's no additional request for financing at the time. It's just to move forward into the public component of the project.
We'll come back to the board for the next phase.
I know we have a, a member in the audience from the community, so do you have any comments?
No, the only thing I was gonna say about the dams, I, I think in two thousand two, the Algonquin Dam now has gates in it also. So that they can, they're, they can control the floods, the flooding in the, in the lower river area. Between the Stratlock and Dam and, and the Algonquin Dam. Before that, they couldn't, it was just one level, that was it. But now, if, if the water's getting too high, they can drop it back out there right away. But they have to be careful about going down river too, of course, you know. Every, it, 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 it goes all the way from Wisconsin all the way down to the Illinois River, you know.
You know, it's been five, six years, Elizabeth, you may know this, I don't know her, hey, you may know it. But five, six years ago, we were working down the county and, and it was through tourism and that, that Fox River way with C map. That there was a lot of money that they were talking about with the restoration and other parts. This is this far into that area, I mean, is this something we could probably tap into now with that?
So I know that there was work down towards the Algonquin area, C map had, because this conversation had come up.
They're working, they're working on the whole river system, but they're working more on. On getting, being able to have a kayak area, which you guys just opened, I think in the little north of me. By being enrolled, you guys got a kayak, kayak entrance there, I think now. It's not a big deal, but if people can put their kayaks in, but that's what they're more working on is, is recreation.
For recreation and tourism, right?
But, you know, you have to realize that the, the Fox River is. One of the highest populated recreation areas in the nation. I mean, that's. You know, it's, 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 it's in, in the summer, it's just, you know, I don't go out on the weekend because it's raining.
So there's currently, and we supported, there is the fabulous Fox, which is working on designation. As a National Park Service Water Trail that, that goes along, you know, throughout from King County all the way up north. I believe that.
Right, it's been a few years, we don't remember, but.
And that's soon to be, I think they were working on the final pieces, I know we were working on some of the areas that were required. But to have the Secretary of the Interior designate that as such. And then, you know, C map was doing some technical studies and then. We, Fox Waterway Agency was doing some local type of, they're always looking for some funding, things like that. So again, I think once a determination is made, then we can determine what to shop around for, right? What's the best strategy for?
Yeah, you know, because Pam Malcom is working now with the Fox. Waterway.
Well, they're also right now trying, trying to put in a large watershed area up north of it, that will end about in Burness Bridge. And that's, that's, that's to get all the cities and counties and, and all the stakeholders on that end of the river to put money into it.
Well, as far as putting money in, we've committed to this first phase and that. Unless any of the trustees. Jack, I, I think our consensus is that Gabe will go ahead with this seeking public input. On this project, which is. Off to a start, but it's a tentative start and you can tell where it may wind up, but it sounds like they've. Done their homework and I've learned something this evening and I appreciate. Always appreciate being straightened out. We will stay tuned. We've done our nine point two, we've done nine point three. Trustee reports. And then the committee report. Well, do any of the trustees have any comments?
The green drinks and some of the different.
No, no, you're fine, I just wanted to say that I know Sean and I attended. The IAPE conference in Chicago and Sean went for the entire conference. I went Saturday, which was a day that it snowed, so it was not fun getting home. Nonetheless, the conference was. It was amazing, I got to meet a lot of people, Elizabeth was introducing me and Sean to a lot of people, so that was fantastic. Got to join in on a lot of sessions that were really informative, I was not really sure what to expect. But everything was great, the speakers were fantastic. I think I left there with a kind of revitalized sense of why we do what we do. And, you know, our, our small portion of it, right, a lot of it goes to Elizabeth and staff and the people actually doing it. But I, I thoroughly enjoyed that and next year, I, I think I will be planning to attend the entire conference. And anyone that's a chance, I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Lloyd, did you?
Yeah, the green drinks met earlier this month and the topic was solar, putting in solar and, and home solar. And, you know, the gist of it, the guy went through all the economics of it and said essentially that there's never been a better time in terms of government support, state federal rebates that are available, even some money even from, from the power companies. Interestingly, he said that the time to do it is if you have an old roof that you're getting ready to replace or you're, you know, in the process of replacing now, but the, the bad thing to do is to put it up and then have to replace your roof because you have to take it off and put it on. So you do need to kind of sync those things up. And something I learned, what there's, there's community solar. So if you, if you, let's say you live in an apartment or you have a, you're, you just don't have much sun, you got, your neighbor has trees and you really don't have an opportunity. There's a community solar. We can get up to ten percent of your electricity covered through a community where there's a solar bank somewhere else and you get credit for that. So pretty good, well-attended and a lot of interest. The foundation met, actually, back in January, but they've met since then. So they had an election of officers. Kevin, the president of last year's, re-elected. Jim Heiser is the VP, Ray Eisner, Secretary, and Kim Becker, Treasury. And now the other, the communications meeting, I thought that was quick. So we've had two meetings or three, I can't remember. I think two. On the, yeah, it's, they were long, they're ninety minutes and we covered a lot of ground in it, but I think the, the basic gist of it is we're working on, you know, what's the messaging? What's the timing? Those are kind of the, the two biggest issues if we go forward with the referendum. As we go forward with the referendum, which, what are the, those are the two big things. And then we're looking at working with the consulting group and Elizabeth put together an excellent letter to try and get them engaged. Before they would, before they would agree to work with us, we had to explain how we go about impacting equality and, and equal access and a whole bunch of, they've, they've got a pretty big agenda before they'll agree to work with us. But if they agree, their win rate on referendums is eighty percent. So it'd be nice to have them as a part.
Okay. Thank you for attending and thank Ray and Sean for coming in. For representing us. John?
So, being that this is only my second Modana Board, I'm not sure exactly what Kelly gave you reports from for us, but I know I'll be able to give my board, write a report for you very easily, but I don't have anything to report unless that there is something that you guys normally enjoyed from some of the other board members. I certainly share our agendas with you would be nice.
I just, yes.
I guess it's a question.
Let me know now.
We have a lot of experience in government and so anything, anytime you can give us a heads up.
Absolutely.
On something that may affect the district or a way that we can cooperate. There were, there've been issues. Department of Transportation comes to mind. And obviously water discharge issues and there is development issues and things like the, and the budget planning, what you know, what type of inflation considerations are being given? So that we're not way out, you know, in left field vis a vis what the county is, is thinking. So.
Well, I was gonna say two, and what I did for Kelly or other liaisons, if in preparation for your meeting, if you want some bullet points or something that would assist, I'm happy to provide those to you. I mean, being at the meeting and hear what's going on, but if there's any ways to assist. And then likewise, I think grant opportunities, that's one of the things I think is outstanding. We, we showed in the budget, we had to take down some items that we had hoped to get from the, the ARPA funding. I believe there's one grant that's still outstanding of the Elgonquin Stream Bank Stabilization Project. And I'm not sure of the timeline on that. I mean, I can talk with Peter too.
Yeah.
But I know with those grant funding opportunities.
They were just down there too, on, on all of that. Okay, I keep my ear a little.
Well, good. We, and we, you know, we appreciate your, your time and.
Just so you know, you know, some of my reports are a little useful to you.
Your president doesn't have much to report. I sat in on a Zoom meeting with the feeling organization relative to their bike path proposal that involves the Henry County and Kenosha County. And, and it's, it's an interesting lesson in public, private partnerships and some wheeling and dealing and, you know, what is the ask from each side and how difficult it is to get all the jurisdictions, whether they're townships or county or villages together on the same page. And, and the question that comes up constantly is, you know, where's the money gonna come from? And so it, but I think, I think there will be bike paths and, and I think it will be beneficial. And the Conservation District is is going to be, I think we, we already have the land grant related to Goose Lake, some property adjacent to the Goose Lake District that feeling will be providing to the district. So that's come out of this.
Yeah.
Or they're giving the, our take and there's. Okay. Okay. Thirteen point O is public comments. If anyone would like to speak, raise your hand or forever.
Just like to say, thank you for going ahead with the, with the planning anyhow. And I know it's not gonna be in my lifetime that it's finished or yours probably either, but thank you for working on it.
We could, we could create a pool, they could bet which. Who's going first? Yeah, that's right. But in any case, you know, small steps and to get you someplace eventually. All right. So now we're coming to the.
Anyone out and just, we still had some individuals still, I don't know if they wanted, any other public comments from our guests that are with us this evening online?
I don't see any hands raised or anything.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right. So now the consent agenda. Normally we discuss some of these issues at the Cal. And I, I think we're gonna be approving the consent agenda, but there are a couple of items that I wanted to just raise and for, put our vacation in front of the group. First, let me ask if anyone else had points on the consent agenda that they wish to bring up. I know Sean had discussed with Elizabeth the fourteen point six, the month-to-month residential, residential license agreements. And I don't think there's any problem with approving what's in the consent agenda, but it does seem to be an issue that may deserve a review. And so perhaps in the future, how in the next several months, John and Elizabeth will get together and if Sean or any other trustee wants to sit on, sit in on or have input into those discussions, please make it available to them. And then you can present the the issue to the board if we should revise any policies there. And this was a question, if Andrew Payne is online. This is just sort of nit, nitpicking a little bit. But we have a fourteen point seven relates to a, a legal document that will represent the interests of both their Conservation District and a real estate developer for the Talomor subdivision. And the question is, is it appropriate for a, an attorney or a law firm to represent both sides of a transaction? That's my question.
Sure, yeah. I'm, I'm happy to address that. Short answer or to que, the short answer to the question is yes, under certain situations, under the rules of professional responsibility that govern lawyers ethical conduct, there are certain that are considered waivable conflicts. And then there are certain conflicts that are considered not waivable, I guess, not consentable by the client. In this case, this is a waivable conflict. So the reason there is a potential conflict is because Attorney Stell's firm has represented this particular developer on unrelated matters in the past. Not in this particular matter. So as long, under the rules of professional conduct, as long as both parties consent to the engagement, then it, it's acceptable. Obviously, if there, there comes a point in time where Attorney Stell's judgment, he thinks that a conflict has risen to the extent that he can no longer zealously represent both clients, he'd be forced to withdraw, withdraw from, from the engagement and not represent either party at all moving forward. I, I think in the context of real estate, this comes up from time to time, fairly straightforward. I, I think we've, we, the, I think the board has, has had one or two of these waiver requests in the past with similar real estate type of arrangements. And Attorney Stell's navigated them with no issues. So in this particular case, I, I don't, I don't see any issue and it's having this type of a, an issue pop up is, can be common. So nothing of particular concern here as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. And I, I would, there's a, a cost advantage to having just one lawyer draw up the document. And I also presume that the cost would be split between the two parties.
So we have Attorney Stell who is online as well. And so he's here and he can speak to the specifics to the transactions.
Well, thank you.
Yes, I think that's, I think he was gonna come on.
Hear me? Sorry. Yeah. Can you hear me, Elizabeth?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Yeah, this was done two thousand and four, two thousand and six, I forget which. And Ryland was the, on the other side of the transaction. And the agreement was made to grant, give this property to the district. There were Lennar. And that's how this conflict developed. The work that we do for Lennar is basically, we have one, one paralegal, Ellen Joyce, who closes houses for Lennar. She works under the supervision of attorneys, but, but Ellen has been doing this for years for that company. And so there's the conflict. Technically, we do have Lennar as a client, but essentially limited to a paralegal doing house closings, uncompleted homes. And basically, the contract is already agreed to, it's basically closing. I'm unders, I understand. I talked to Ellen this afternoon. Lennar wants to give the district an additional strip of land with a stormwater license or easement that would go along with it. And it would extend south from what's being given immediately. And one last thing, I, I'm told that Lennar has already waived the conflict. So but it's, it's a conflict that we backed into because Lennar was acquired Ryland many years ago. So and basically it's, it's simply closing a deal that's already been worked out, formalized. One last thing, if there is a dispute, we would withdraw from both sides, not just the district. We would back out of Lennar as well. So just to make that clear. I don't expect, don't anticipate that, but if that were to happen, we, we would not represent either party. Excuse me, I apologize.
Thank you for that background information and for educating us, me in particular. And we appreciate all the good work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah. Oh, and.
Is the cost of this split between the two parties?
I talked to Val about that. We talked about Lennar picking up the costs and that was just discussed this afternoon. So I haven't had a chance to explore that. That's obviously something we could raise.
Better pay it all.
Yeah, well, if they'll pay it all, that's, that's wonderful. So.
Yeah. Folks, I can't speak for Lennar. I don't know a single.
But in, in general, if you have a single attorney working for both parties, there's a project between splitting the cost.
Right. Oh, yeah. I, yeah, I think the deal is basically set on this first parcel. It's the second one that's going to be. The district's gonna have to do some due diligence on, see if you really want it. This is an additional strip extending south from what's being given immediately.
I think we'll have to wait for Val to report to us then.
Yeah, it's. Jump in.
We, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank, thank you all. Thank you very much. If there are any questions, just pass them through Val or whatever. I, I talk to him almost every day. So just have him call me and we'll, we'll deal with him.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I must have been feeling sort of compulsive because I went through this in a number of points. And then I, I mentioned to Elizabeth, but I thought we should have some comments about the fourteen point one five installation monitoring and leasing of cameras. Five more cameras for twenty-five thousand dollars for a two-year period. And I know we, we've discussed this issue and heard of the benefits. And it seems like this, our program is growing and I wonder if you could like to comment about this.
Chief is on board here.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for this opportunity. So as you may remember, when I got hired in two thousand and nineteen, the board at the time challenged me to find smart policing solutions where our officers could leverage technology so that we were working smarter and not harder, hoping that we could do more effective police work with a fewer number of officers due to there being thirty-five sites open to the public and us only having eleven, including me. And only so many people are on duty. We can't all be in the same place at the same time. At the two thousand and nineteen Chiefs of Police Conference, I ran across this company called Flock Safety. Flock was a company that was primarily operating in the private sector for homeowners associations and malls, large retail establishments. And they were just breaking into the public sector. And at that time, we had some money in the budget and we ended up transferring it, doing a line item transfer so that we could start with a couple of cameras. And we started with three. Glacial Park, The Hollows and Rush Creek were our third, our three cameras. And so we kind of wanted to see if they were effective. And these flock cameras are really quite incredible. They, they tout themselves to be the first camera that sees and acts like an actual detective. And this is because flock does more than just cop, capture license plates, which is what a lot of cameras do. But you can search cars by vehicle make, vehicle model, color, type, plate, the state that the plate's in, and even unique features such as a luggage rack on top of the car or a bumper sticker or damage to the vehicle. Now, you guys might not know this, but seven out of time, seven out of ten of the crimes that are committed in the United States involve the use of a vehicle. And so these cameras are very smart. They don't require any infrastructure. We are using them on our ready district mounted poles. They're motion activated, they're solar powered, and the most important part is they provide twenty-four seven, seven coverage of all of our sites. Now, these cameras cooperate with the law enforcement databases, Leeds and NCIC, that's the state database and the national database respectively, to alert the officers in real time, anytime a vehicle with a license plate that has a wanted-on-a-warrant, that is a license plate of a missing person, that has, is a stolen license plate. That has a wanted on a warrant, that is a license plate of a missing person, that has, uh, is a stolen license plate or a stolen vehicle. Anytime, uh, any of those things occur, it, and notifies the officers in real time. It also notifies the officers when there's safety concerns, and this includes registered sex offenders going onto our site. Now, um. This has been. Exceptional for us because now when a problem person or a problem vehicle comes into our site, our officers know as it's coming in. That the vehicle came in and can start moving in that area before a, a problem occurs to monitor the area. In fact, the state's attorneys so cooperative with flock technology. That, um, in the rare instance that we do have a sex offender coming on site, just the capturing of the video from the flock camera is enough for the state's attorney. To approve charges so that we could drive to that person's home and hand deliver them a citation and, uh, remind them. Uh, that they're not supposed to be on our sites and that we're not gonna allow that type of behavior. So, the National Institute of Justice says, uh, the chances of being caught actually reduces crime far more than even severe as penalties do. In fact, there's a special district in a different state that's using the flock cameras, they have had forty-six percent fewer car break-ins. And twenty-five less vehicle thefts from their property. Now, we don't have a magnitude of problems like that, but we were. Seeing car break-ins and we have seen, uh, uh, more than half of a reduction in those crimes. Now, I'd love to tell you it's just the cameras, it was also COVID, there were more people in the sites, you know, we, we don't really know that it's the cameras and the cameras alone. Uh, but we do know that we have less crime. So, um, flock, we were the first agency in Illinois to get Flock's cameras. Now there are actually hundreds of agencies in Illinois, flock cameras are in over two thousand cities across the United States. And all of these cameras talk to each other and share databases, so. Let's say something terrible happened in Wisconsin and we had a, a vehicle on a plate of somebody who, who, you know, was a missing person. Or, or maybe a kidnapped victim, something like that. Um, they could enter that plate into their database and when that. License plate came across in any other jurisdiction, they would be notified and they could, uh, cooperate with local authorities to address the crime. So, um. Block cameras help to solve more than two hundred crimes per day across the United States, which is approximately five percent of the crimes in the area. We currently have six cameras, I told you about the three we started with, uh, they were so effective, the next year we expanded it to Marengo Ridge, Fox Bluff. And Pleasant Valley, and then last year this grant came out. And it was specifically for leveraging technology in rural areas to help, uh, police be more effective. So, um, we asked if we could, uh, submit the grant, we submitted the grant, we initially asked for ten cameras, we were awarded five of them. Uh, for a two-year contract, there is no match and there is no obligation to continue to use the cameras. Uh, after the two-year term, we could just use them for free for two years and, and give them back, flock will take them back, so, um. We've, we've solved a lot of crimes with these cameras, dumping, illegal dumping, um, damage to the property. And we've made a whole bunch of arrests for warrants and sex offenders, so, um, it's really helping us to do our job well. And so I think, I think that, uh, I think you should support us taking this free money.
I saw the twenty-five thousand dollars figure and it wasn't clear to me that that was, uh. Uh, that's coming out of our budget, so.
All free.
You made it even more attractive, so I, I, and I appreciate the update, sometimes. You know, I think we worry about Big Brother and.
Yeah.
He, uh, helps us to. Effectively.
I understand, but you know, there's new board members, so I think it's great that we keep having these conversations so that people understand. Why we moved to this technology and, you know, if in fact it is working for us.
Thanks, we appreciate you.
Because they're motion activated, do, do we get any wildlife?
We do, we do, and you can actually filter, uh, people, wildlife, cars, so it's a very smart system. So I guess the officers could use it to, uh, monitor wildlife if they, if they wanted to, but that's not the, the primary way we use the cameras.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could just clarify, because the, the item on the consent agenda. Does state monitoring, leasing of five cameras for a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand. But this is fully, it's a grant to receive a grant in the amount of.
We, uh, clarified. We accepted the grant. Already. The grant was from Laura, can you help me out? Who, who sent us the grant?
Yeah, so it's like NC, I, you know, it's a big long acronym, but it is, uh, the rural technology grant for. Uh, it's the, I'm sorry, Technology Usage Grant for Rural Law Enforcement, basically it's through the, uh, Bureau of Justice. And so, um, those monies kind of trickle down into a program, trickle down into a program, and the rural technology program is the program that we are under. Um, but yeah, the grant funding came through, we accepted it, what we're doing now is we're trying to move forward with the purchase because of the dollar amount, it needs to be at your level of attention.
We approved that, uh, grant agreement in. October of twenty twenty-two, and I had the name right in front of me, Bureau of Justice Assistance for Northern and Middle State Rural Law Enforcement Training. And Technical Assistant Grant Program.
See, I told you it was very long.
It won't be a chest, I hope, but, well, thank you, so we've had the money in one pocket.
We need to expense, so I just wanna make sure we're connecting and follow.
Alright, well, uh, part of the consent agenda is the treasurer's internal audit and year-to-date, uh, revenues. Over budget are, uh, almost, uh. A million dollars, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand above what was projected. Which is nine point seven, again, above the budget, and our expenses, there's six point eight percent below the budget. Six hundred and three thousand dollars approximately. So, um. We were doing well, if we were a business, we, we had more coming in than you expected to pay out. So that's good. And then my last shout out is to the endangered rusty patch bumblebee. Fourteen point nine. Also known as Bombas of Venus. It's an important pollinator species that lives underground and, uh, you may find flying around your garden. But, uh. One of the items is to, uh, partner with, uh. On conservation, good US Fish and Wildlife. To, uh. Support the rusty patch bumblebee in Northern Illinois and Southern Wisconsin's.
Yeah, Wisconsin D and R.
I thought that was a worthy goal. More interesting than cameras or. Alright, I'm done with picking apart.
That's okay.
The consent agenda. So if anyone's. Willing, let's have a motion to adopt the consent.
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda, and then the, agenda.
In a second. Ben, that's the second.
You guys to read it, yeah.
Yes.
Fourteen, um, fourteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, fourteen point one A. December twenty, twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole is a concession, fourteen one, fourteen point one B. January twelve, twenty twenty-three, maybe of the whole, fourteen point one C, January seventeen, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, fourteen point two. Acceptance of the treasurer's report, fourteen point two A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for January third first, twenty twenty-three, as presented. Fourteen point two B, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, quarter three, general fund variance report. Fourteen point. Three, resolution number twenty-three dash oh five, authorizing the destruction of listed. Or even recordings of executive sessions prior to July, or twenty, I'm sorry. Prior to July twenty twenty-one, in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, fourteen point four, resolution number twenty-three dash. Oh, six, authorizing the release of the listed executive session meeting minutes to the public domain of compliance with the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Fourteen point five, resolution number twenty-three. Dash oh seven, awarding in contact to. GOVHR, GOVHR of Northbrook, Illinois, to. They can make external compensation market study and an internal equity analysis for the time of twenty-two thousand two hundred. RFP number oh eight, two, two, point oh four, point oh one. Fourteen point six, resolution number twenty-three dash oh eight. Authorizing the executive director to execute the sixth month of my residence license agreements as presented. Through the term of April first, twenty twenty-three, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen point seven, resolution number twenty-three dash oh nine, offered. Authorizing the executive director to execute the waiver consent. And agreement from Meltzer, Fertile and Stell LLC, confirming the firm's representation. About the district and CalAtlantic Group LLC, Leonard Communities of Chicago, Talomar Subdivision. Fourteen point eight, resolution number twenty-three dash ten, authorizing the executive director to execute a grant agreement. With IDNR and BAAD in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. For accessibility improvements at the hollows conservation area boat launch. Fourteen point nine, resolution. Number twenty-three dash eleven, ratifying the subdivision of MUS. Fish and Wildlife Service CSWG in partnership with WDNR and MCCF. To target recovery to, of rusty patch bumblebee populations. And other species of greatest and. Conservation need as identified in the Illinois and Wisconsin Wildlife Action Plans. Fourteen point ten, resolution number twenty-three dash twelve. Approving an IGA between MCCD and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. For propagation of freshwater mussels. Fourteen point eleven, authorizing to prepare specifications and letting of bids for hiring contractors. To treat invasive spirit, invasive species at six high priority, priority. Oh my goodness, priority restoration projects. BID number zero, two, two, three. Point oh eight, point oh one. Fourteen point twelve, resu, resolution number twenty-three dash thirteen. Awarding the bid for a one-year contract with option to renew. For one additional year to the lowest qualified bidder, had press, uh, uh, out in Illinois. For the printing and mailing of the district's landscapes magazine as, at a proposed unit cost of nine thousand. One hundred and ninety-one. Per issue, BID. Number oh, oh, one, two, three. Point one, oh, point oh one. Fourteen point one, three, resolution number twenty-three dash fourteen, authorizing the executive director to execute a professional services agreement. For the Prairie Trail Resurfacing and Rehabilitation Project with Hay and Associates. Inc. of Bolo, Illinois, for a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. RFP number oh, two, two, three, point oh nine, point oh one. Fourteen point fourteen, resolution. Number twenty-three dash fifteen, authorizing the execu, execution of irrevocable. Irrevocable limit license agreement with comment. Fourteen point fifteen, resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen, authorizing the executive director to execute. The additional services agreement with block group aim for installation, monitoring and leasing of five cameras. For a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Trusty Gate.
One, yes.
Secretary Thomas. Yes, trustee Everard.
Yes.
Vice President Down.
Yes.
Your friends?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, uh. Have if you'll take us through the, uh.
Okay, does anybody have any fifteen point one eight, does anybody have any bills?
Um. I can't really read it, but it's the last one. WZ. X Health Inc., Wealth Inc. I don't know what it says. It's so tiny, it's one seventy-five. Hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents, I believe.
Anybody else?
Do you want one? I can't hardly either.
Hey, um. Fifteen point one B, move for the consideration of who the payment of bills is indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending January. Thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
You'll start him. And the role, please.
Trustee Everard. Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Where's your friends?
Yes.
Trusty Gate.
Yes.
Vice President Down.
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes.
Fifteen dash two, I move for the passage of ordinance twenty-three dash ten, twenty-four. Adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, final combined annual budget.
That's second, but.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Gate?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
Where's your friends?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Press President Down.
Yes. Well, very good, that's. Really. Elizabeth, now what, remind us of the timetable now for the budget, and you go.
Yes, so I'll, I'll send out some reminders, so the first stop along the way, after, uh, tomorrow it'll be certified over at the county. And, uh, communication will go out, uh, to the chairman. Uh, presenting the budget, uh, for them to review, then it'll go to finance and audit. At their meeting and that's the committee gets a sign from there, um, that it gets a favorable. Um, acceptance, it will then on to the cow and then the regular meetings, we should be wrapped up by March. Um, that would be the goal.
Alright, so, uh. Now the executive directors report.
Well, wonderful, well again, thank you, good discussion, I appreciate being the flexibility of us needing to cancel last week, even the storm and putting everything here. Cause a lot of the great conversations about consent items, really what the cows for, but we really did a great job, thank you for highlighting some of those. Because there was a lot of, of information here and Linda for you was reading this out, so, sorry that this is a, this is a big month. But also for the staff's work and the board on, on the budget, so look forward to that. Um, in your report, you've got, uh, all the quarterly reports, so we did delay that for this quarter by one month. Normally you would have seen them, but again, with the holidays and the turnaround, um, we just found that it's difficult to do the reporting and all the detail. So again, all those are there and if you answer any questions that you have. Um, in addition, uh, we have next Monday evening, uh, is our strategic planning workshop with the McHenry County. Conservation Foundation or Lost Valley Visitor Center, um, that will be at five o'clock, today is the workshop format. Uh, we will be getting some, some dinner things to snack on at five o'clock, so you have something to eat if you're coming from, from work for that. And, uh, we'll get rolling in after a little bit of a social, uh, we'll dive in at five thirty and, and start that process. Um, on Friday, I will send out to you, um, the work that the staffing team has done to kind of outline, uh, strategic direction and focus. And then we'll engage you and then walk you through and, uh, maybe be part of that process. Um, also included, uh, in your packet, uh, there was a letter of support that we sent on, uh, at the request of the McHenry County Division Transportation. Uh, for their work on, uh, Randall Road North Project, so we gave a favorable support for that. Um, like I mentioned before, the fabulous Fox, um, team members have been working on that, that is just one step away from getting. Support of that becoming a natural park service, uh, designated waterway. And, um, I believe on the third, um. Trustee Everak's gonna be joining me and Director of Operations and Public Safety Kramer for our legislative, uh, breakfast. Uh, working with our legislators and, and opportunity we visited. Um, at the conference, uh, we were able to speak with Senator DeWitt's, uh, Legislative Assistant. Uh, but hopefully we'll have good showings from other, um, McHenry Lake County legislators, it'll be at that, uh, breakfast in Gurnee, so it's really important. Um, things are moving, I do know, um, in Springfield, Friday was their last day for bills that were introduced in the House. Um, to be coming out of the House and onward, and so it's, it's really busy. Uh, so we'll keep an eye on what's happening, uh, a lot of action and, uh, not always good stuff, but. But we'll keep an eye on it to see if there's anything affecting us. And then lastly, um, and you can pick one up on the way out, as you know, um, naturally McHenry County. Um, they've now produced their twenty twenty-three guide, um, this is an award-winning guide, and so, um, again, a lot of great things to do. And see in McHenry County and the outdoors is one of those places, so this is to get outdoors and experience, so. Um, that is all that I. that is all that I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth on the board? Okay. Committee assignments and reports. Well, I think we've sort of discussed what we did. And so we'll move on to ask if the public has any comments before we go into executive session. And if there are none, then we need a motion to return.
With a motion going to executive session.
Motion, you know, the executive session. Chris and Pat seconds.
Trustee Gate.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President down.
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
So we are going to go in. There's no action out of executive session when we come back.